Thank you all for coming. We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:10. If you'd all rise, please, and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you'd all please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our servicemen and women and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes, Counselor Condon, Counselor Crowe, Counselor Linehan, Counselor McDonald, Counselor O'Malley. We can't hear him, but I know he's here.
Counselor O'Malley is here.
Here.
J.D., Counselor Seega, Counselor Simonelli, Counselor Spatafora, Counselor Winslow, Counselor President Murphy.
Here.
One, two, three, four, five, six. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. We will be able to proceed with the meeting. First of all, I'd like to let everyone know that under the provisions of the open meeting law, that this is being taped by UMA Urban Media Arts and also is on Zoom, so there will be audio and video recording of the proceedings this evening. Okay? The other thing, just like a little bit of housekeeping here because we are on Zoom and we are going to have people participating, that I'd like to remind all of the members, participants, and attendees, whether they are in person here or remote, to maintain decorum. This includes not speaking all at once, so not speak or not speaking over another. When authorized to speak, members and others will speak through the chair, which is myself. Maintaining the decorum facilitates the accurate remote transmission as well as the accurate recording of the meeting, not only digitally, but also through the manual recording being done for the public by the clerk. So, the other thing is, okay, clerk, first order of business.
All righty. The Malden City Council will meet in the Harbert L. Jackson Council Chamber, Malden City Hall, 215 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass. at 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, June 7, 2023, for the purpose of receiving an update from the city's project consultant, Stantec Urban Places, regarding the potential zoning scenarios being considered to achieve compliance with the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Zoning Law, MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A, and to hold a public hearing to receive public comment regarding the potential zoning scenarios.
Thank you. Before we begin the actual hearing, we will receive a presentation from our consultant, Stantec Urban Places. This, for the folks who are tuning in for the first time or really hearing about this for the first time, is really the first opportunity for the public to comment on the working draft of a possible scenario. This is something that the council approved or looked at and decided to go with in April, and there has been an internal team working with our consultant, with city staff, and also Counselor Winslow and Counselor Spatafora. So, once again, this is a first draft. It's a working draft. I don't want anyone to think that this is a done deal. There will be plenty of time for comment by the public. We want your comments. We want to hear what you think about this presentation. There'll also be an open survey that will run all summer, so that we really are going to do our best to get the input from the community as to how they would like to see this zoning happen. So, I don't want anyone to think this is one and done. It's not. It's the first opportunity. We're going to hear the presentation, and then when we open the public comment, we're going to hold the questions until the end. Well, you can ask the questions, but we're going to, Stantec and city clerk are going to write them down, and at the end of the presentation, then we will do our best to answer those questions that we do have the answers for. For those that we don't, we will take note of them, and we will actually find, get the answers, and we'll get them back out to the public. So, I just wanted, there's a process that we will be following. The counselors, I'm going to ask you all to keep your comments to yourselves until the public has had their opportunity to speak, and then we will go, bring discussion back to the council floor. Okay? So, thank you. So, we have our Stantec team. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Sarah Brent McCoy. Hold on one second. Let me, one moment. One moment. Just let me get your mic on, which would be...
Do this to everybody, all of them.
Okay. Well, we have a little glitch here because we're not on. All right. One laptop we didn't try today.
And we have the answer to how many people it takes to turn a computer on. So... Let's hope.
This is, this meeting is going to be so worth it. Counselor.
Yes. Okay. It actually, Counselor, it actually might be. And poor Carol Anne has been down here since 4:00 to make sure that everything worked well and there were no glitches, so. She did her best, so. All right. Everyone take a deep breath. Seems like we're live and we're ready to go. Representatives from Stantec, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Sarah Brent McCoy. My address is 40 Water Street, Boston.
And hi. I am Nels Nelson, also 40 Water Street, Boston.
We are here from Stantec. We've been working with the city planner and the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, as well as a few members of the council, to develop this update since our last presentation in front of the council in April. There's a bit of a lag on the slides, but to give you an introduction to MBTA communities zoning, it's a state law with the purpose to encourage the production of multifamily housing. It requires all the communities on the map to adopt a zoning districts where multifamily housing, that's three or more units, is allowed as of right without special permit. There are other requirements in the statute, but as you can see, Malden is in the red circle, in the darkest blue, which means it's a rapid transit community. That means that it has a T station, and it's one of 12 rapid transit communities, which have the quickest compliance deadline. That's the end of this year. What does it mean to not comply? Any community that doesn't comply would forfeit eligibility for major state grant programs such as Mass Works and Housing Choice. I want to reiterate that this is not a housing production mandate. It's just a zoning, it's a required zoning change. So, a little bit of context for Malden specifically. Knowing that the guidance provided by the department formerly known as DHCD or Department of Housing and Community Development provides for a lot of flexibility, communities can decide, have a lot of options in deciding where and how to comply. Malden specifically has a lot of existing high-density and multifamily neighborhoods, and really complying with this law doesn't require allowing for any types of housing that aren't already here. But importantly, most of your multifamily housing today could not be rebuilt by right under current zoning, if it disappeared overnight. So, what does compliance look like? It looks like adopting an overlay with a certain capacity for a certain number of multifamily units in Malden. That's 6,930. So, what's our strategy? We've been working with the city council since our April presentation to them, where they gave us the direction to prioritize areas near transit, prioritize areas with existing multifamily housing, where it already sort of makes sense and is being built, and preserve commercial and business areas. Make sure that areas that are fitting for commercial and business aren't developed into housing in, as an alternative. We're looking at, because of the diversity of housing types in Malden, we're looking at using an overlay with many different sub-districts to allow for different densities that fit the existing character of each neighborhood. Would make sense for Malden Center. Doesn't make sense along Main Street or Summer Street or at Overlook Ridge. And then finally, part of our strategy is evaluating the impacts to revenue, traffic, schools, infrastructure, open space, and municipal services. That analysis is underway. So, to walk us through this map, there are seven working draft sub-districts. They're really a snapshot of where we are today. None of these lines are hard and fast, but you'll see that we have the seven different colors representing the seven different sub-districts. Many of them are clustered near train stations, near Malden Center and Oak Grove. Those dotted lines are half miles from each station, and per the DHCD requirements, 50% of Malden's zoned multifamily capacity needs to be, that's part of complying with this law, needs to be within a half mile of those stations. You'll also see that we've included two existing multifamily developments outside of that, or further away from that half-mile radius to get to the capacity requirement.
Sarah, before you move to the next screen, this is, if you'd back, yes, if you'd stay on that one, this is a kind of a complicated screen, and you're speaking a little softly. So, I would, just for the public, ask that you kind of repeat this again, so to make sure that everyone is clear on what you said, because even up here, I had a little hard time hearing, you know, some of the distances that you were saying. So, if you wouldn't mind doing that, I think it would be helpful to everyone. Thank you.
Sure. So, I'm just going to reiterate what I previously said. Is this volume okay?
No, that's, if you just reiterated that, no. Exactly. And I don't know if you need to pull the microphone a little closer to you, or whatever, but it would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So, we're looking at a map of seven proposed sub-districts for Malden to comply with the law. They're shown in different colors. I want it to be clear that this is a draft. This is a snapshot of where we are today and where our conversations are today, but these, we sort of expect some of these, these boundaries to change and these groupings to change, but they're representative of where we are today. You'll see that we have the majority of the shaded areas close to the two T stations, Malden Center and Oak Grove. The dotted lines on the map represent a half-mile radius from those two stations. Per the guidelines from DHCD, half of Malden's compliant zoned multifamily capacity needs to be within a half mile of those two stations. But we also include Altitude, which is formerly known as Grenada Highlands in green, and Overlook Ridge in purple, to represent the recommendation to include also existing multifamily outside of the transit area. So, remember, I guess, what's on this map, or try to keep it in mind as we go to the next slide, and talk a little bit about the details of each of these seven working sub-districts. Thank you. So, here we have, for each sub-district, a little profile card. At the top, we have the name and a little description of the character of the area, and then for each one, we have three numbers. For the top number, we have what we call proposed capacity. That is using a calculator provided by DHCD to estimate, you know, with a draft understanding of what the zoning requirements are going to be in that area, estimate what the, how many multifamily units, if nothing existed in that area, how many multifamily units could be built in its place. And so, each of these numbers, on each of these cards, the top numbers, the proposed capacity, chips away at that 6,930 number. So, those are contributing to that. The middle number, existing units, is what's currently there. So, for some of these, you can see there is no housing currently, and then in some of these, you can see there's some housing, but less than that top number. And then some of these, you can see that there's the same amount of housing or similar. For example, with Altitude, or formerly known as Grenada Highlands, those numbers are the same. The final number is net new units, or the difference between those two numbers. So, that would be, that would be the addition of units if this, if this zoning were to be adopted as is today, the additional units that would be added to each of these areas on top of, or the difference from what's already there. So, as you can see, we're not adding anything to Altitude, formerly known as Grenada Highlands. We're not adding anything to Malden Center, but, for example, Malden Center B, the National Grid Site, you see in addition, some of the neighborhood, sort of lower-density areas, you see in addition. I want to reiterate that this is a very, this is, again, a snapshot. This is one way it could go. It's really just representative to inform a conversation, and I also want to point out that the total number of proposed capacity units here far exceeds the 6,930 zoned units. It's far exceeding it to, again, facilitate conversation, and we can figure out how and where to chip away at it, or at other things, but I just, I want to be clear about that. Another concept I want to talk about is sort of the sum of the net new zoned units. Again, Malden has a lot of flexibility with complying with this law. You could take it as an opportunity to build a lot more multifamily housing, or you could comply in a way that minimizes the number of net new units. That range is just sort of, is one estimate where we are right now of how much, what that gap is between what exists and what would need to exist to comply. But there are, of course, of course, a lot of pathways to comply, and Malden could add housing, or add a lot of housing, or not. And again, I don't want to misspeak. It's not adding housing. It's adding zoning for housing. Finally, this is just a summary of the two past slides, again, seeing the half-mile radius from the two stations, and the little profile cards of each sub-district, sort of where they stand today. Again, the scenario represents more capacity than is needed to comply, and we're excited to hear everyone's input, and also want to bring up the survey again, where we'll be talking, where we'll get into some of the details of this scenario and what people's preferences are related to it. Excited for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess we'll open the public hearing as the next step. What I'd like to do is, for anyone who didn't know, copies of the presentation, if you're in the audience, are up here on the table to your left, so please feel free to go up and take one. Also, if you are in the audience in attendance, if you would like to sign your name to let us know that you were here, so we can keep in contact with you, there is a piece of paper beside the presentation, and if you do come up to speak, we would ask that you sign your name and address on the sheet that's at the podium. Once again, clearly stating your name and address into the microphone for the record. So, thank you. So, with that, I will call the public hearing open and ask for anyone in the audience. We are, I guess, one more thing I will say. We are going to alternate. Those of you who are here in the audience, thank you for coming out this evening, but we do have people on the Zoom link, so we will do our best to alternate between an in-person speaker and a Zoom speaker. And once again, we are not going to be entertaining questions as you speak. You feel free to ask them. They will be noted, and at the end of the discussion in the public hearing, we will go back and we will do our best to answer those questions that we can this evening. Okay. No problem in Houston, so we'll go. So, I would invite the first person from the audience that would like to come up and speak. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Neil Kinnon, 11 Spruce Street, Malden, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Kinnon.
Good evening, Counselor Murphy and other councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The first thing, as a question, that I'd like answered is, how large is the central business district? The second question I'd like answered is, how does a zone, how many, according to the law, from what I read, there only has to be one zone of reasonable size? So, I see many zones up on the board, and I would suggest to you, based on some very quick calculations, that in order to do 6,900 units close to the T, you need approximately 2 million square feet. And that, I believe, is not much more than the central business district in order to get those units, because you can build six stories high in the central business district. And if you do some calculations on that, you'll quickly find out that you could get that mostly all in the central business district. I believe. I could be incorrect. But if somebody would know that, then we could be done with this, at least from that The new law for multifamily zoning from the MBTA communities requires the following: at least one district, reasonable size, that allows a minimum density of 15 housing units per acre. I would ask each of you to go back to the GLAM study, which was done by MAPC, not Neil Kinnon, a couple of years back, and that you, Counselor Murphy, required, along with Counselor Matheson, for them to figure out how much land we had that was available for building versus how much was used for affordable housing. They did that study, and on page five, on the bottom page, it tells you there's 2,020 acres in Malden to build on, that is available to build, because you can't include ponds, you can't include parks, because you can't take them over, you can't include conservation land, and you can't include cemeteries, and a number of other things, including your streets. So, if you then divide that by the 27,075 units that existed in this city at the census of 2020, you will find that this city has 13 and a half units per acre today. Some neighborhoods, like Maplewood Highlands, some neighborhoods, like the West End, have very little. Some neighborhoods, like Maplewood Square, are currently at, and this includes the schools that are there, the Baptist Church, all the businesses, but right around Maplewood Square is 20 units per acre. If you go to Ward 7, based upon Maplewood, this is just an estimate, you're probably upwards of 40 to 45 units per acre today. So, given those numbers, Malden doesn't have to do much. Our neighbors certainly have to do a whole lot. So, we should be doing... So we should be doing what the law requires, but also evaluate, or to be nice, here's a question for you. How much money do we get from the state? Because if we're talking $1 or $2 million a year, here's the next question. How much are we losing in Chapter 70 funding on every housing unit that we put up due to the penalty for income, which has become a real problem for us? And understand that that can be told, just by the last decade, in Chapter 70 funding, in the state, it averaged over 3% on average for most communities in the state. Malden got, since 2014, 1.7% increase on average annually for Chapter 70. We cannot sustain that. The reason that happened, one year, Winchester didn't grow, Malden didn't grow. They got $1 million more in Chapter 70 funding. Malden got $6,000 more. We were building all those units. That's what happened. So the question is, if that hasn't been, if that has not been changed, has it been changed? If it hasn't, you ought to go to court with the state and ask for equity, like has happened in many states across the country. Because you shouldn't build another unit if we're losing money on every unit, because the children of this community that are here today depend on you. A zone must be located not more than a half a mile from the commuter rail station. How large must that zone be? Did they tell us that? How la, well, I won't ask. So why is the Malden City Council and the mayor pushing forward with the idea that the entire city, or large portions of it, need to be accommodated for multi-unit apartment buildings? Cutting off single families and dropping parking requirements to build housing units and allowing building on lots without the proper size and setbacks needed today? The building I sit in today, word on the street, is that Jay Malden has approached the city and asked for more parking. So the idea that parking, people come to apartments and don't need parking, is a complete and utter fallacy. Because there is no building more commuter-friendly than the one we sit in or stand in tonight. The current downtown area is zoned for way more than 15 housing units, as I stated. The Moratorium Growth Management Report of March of 2017, conducted and written by Community Opportunities Group, authorized by the city council, provided a marginal cost analysis of all development forms, single-family, multifamily apartment, commercial, industrial, retail. Page 65. It would, I would recommend that every counselor, every person on the planning board, the mayor's office, reread this report. What that information did not contain, however, is the cost data on the Chapter 70 educational funding deduction at that time. But despite that, what it showed is that in housing apartments, even if we got the funding changed, the drop to the bottom line was 11 cents. 11 cents for every dollar of revenue on an apartment. It is actually negative because of that Chapter 70 funding problem. Significantly negative. What it also showed is for industrial, commercial, office, that the drop to the bottom line, the thing which actually pays for all these things the city council, the mayor, the citizens want, and the education is industrial and commercial. Page 65, not Neil Kinnon, Community Opportunities Group, commissioned by the council, paid by the city, to do this study. Those numbers may have changed some. They have not changed much. So I would leave you with that and say, please, please, find out about Chapter 70 education funding, and don't be bullied into doing this. Because if we're going to lose a million to 2 million from the state, take them to court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnon. Do we have anyone on Zoom? We don't see any hands on Zoom at the moment. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to come up and speak? Anyone else who would like to come up and speak? In favor or against? Take both sides. And we don't see any, no, there's no one on Zoom. Okay. Then I think what we'll do is we'll bring the discussion back to the council. If someone does change their mind, please just raise your hand in the audience or online. And we certainly will be more than willing to listen to you, even as we start our discussion up here. So thank you. So Counselor. Oh, I, that's why it says Counselors. Never mind, I've got it. Counselor McDonald.
Sorry, I'm sitting in a different chair.
Yes.
I had a process point, and then I'm happy to ask some questions about this. My process question is recognizing that this is, anyone who might be tuning in, a lot of this is probably new information, it takes some time to digest. Do we have a way by which our residents can submit commentary and feedback about this as they try to reflect on this? I mean, it's a lot to figure out what these things mean. Is there a way for people to submit their commentary after this public meeting?
Would you please come to the podium, Ms. Romero? Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Romero, City Planner. Yes, there will be an opportunity to submit written comments through the survey.
Through the survey?
Yes, through the survey.
You know, I actually didn't know that there was a survey. Could you tell us more?
Oh, that was at the beginning, I'm sorry, you might have missed it. This is only the first part of community engagement. This hearing is the first piece of the community engagement we're planning. There's going to be an online survey that will open up sometime in the next week or two, and it will remain open through mid-September. There will be specific questions, similar, it will show the same scenario. So we're going to get feedback on the same concepts. And there will be opportunity to provide comments and questions.
Excellent, thank you.
And that'll all be posted on the website once everything is pulled together, as will all the questions from tonight.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks.
I mean, the purpose, I think, of tonight is to really, you know, give the team any input that we might have that they haven't heard yet. So anything that's a little bit different, anything we like or we don't like. And as, you know, Ms. Romero said, this, and I said opening, this is the first of what's going to be many discussions. So this is just the opening, the opening day game, so to speak.
So I had two questions about that. Is it, is it appropriate for me to ask those questions?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Council President. So thank you to our consultants and our staff for this continuing work. I wanted to ask, first, you may, or may not remember that in the last time we had a discussion like this, I said, you know, one of my priorities as a counselor is to address the affordable housing crisis that threatens the future of this community. And so we talked about ways in which affordability could be built in in certain types of incentives, as long as we're meeting basic requirements here. Since that discussion, we've seen other cities, Lexington, I know Newton's got one up, you know, passing some of their MBTA communities zoning. And so I think we may have a little bit more to draw on. But I'm curious how that consideration about affordability and ways to incentivize that, promote that, in terms of like, income-restricted units for families, for folks who are working class and poor, how that is being factored into this revised analysis?
I, I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you answer this question. But just in deference to the people who have spoken, who were in the public, we said all the questions were going to be answered at the end. So I mean, if we wanted, where we don't have a lot of comments, we don't have a lot of public speakers here, what I would suggest is that you answer Counselor McDonald's question, and then we will go back to Mr. Kinnon and answer his questions. And then we can go from there.
And I'm happy to have you answer Mr. Kinnon's questions first, if that would be more appropriate.
It's, your question's kind of on the floor, so let's just answer that one. Ms. Romero, if you want to come up and answer that, and we'll go back to Mr. Kinnon's questions.
Thank you. So this new zoning law, or this new state law, allows, but doesn't require, any new zoning that we pass to include up to 10% affordable housing. So it's not required, but we could allow it if we wanted to. We can go as high as 20%. To go up to 20%, we would need to do an economic feasibility analysis. We would like to at least reach the 15% affordable housing, which is what our current inclusionary zoning housing allows, excuse me, requires. So part of this process is going to be submitting an economic feasibility analysis so that we can at least require 15% affordable housing in any new zoning that we pass pursuant to this law. So it's a work in progress. We're using the economic feasibility study that we did before we adopted the inclusionary zoning. But the state has also set other requirements and modeling that we're going to have to do. We are in the process of identifying funding, because that's a new requirement that we now have to meet. Or new compliance model we have to deal with. So we're locating the funding, hopefully, as we speak. And then we'll pursue that. So when we submit to the state the actual zoning package for any new zoning we want to put in place, that's the time when we'll submit the economic feasibility analysis for the affordable housing. But again, we will, we're capped between 10 and 20%. And we're going to be able to go for the 15% because we do have the economic feasibility study from before.
Yeah, thank you. And if I may, I mean, I think I'm, I think I'm trying to ask a slightly different question. Because that, that requirement threshold is based on our inclusionary zoning, and how many affordable, the percentage of affordable units we could require of any given project, correct?
Well, the 15 is, but the 10 to 20 is in the state guideline.
Right, I understand that. But that's in relationship to a, an inclusionary zoning-type ordinance which requires construction of affordable housing when projects are going forward, right? And our affordable, excuse me, our inclusionary zoning ordinance only takes effect when you're talking about eight units or more. And so I would assume, although maybe that's a good question, that some of the pieces of this map are mapping a proposed density that is less than eight units on a given lot. And so that wouldn't apply for any of those units, right?
I think that that remains to be seen. The sample ordinance, I don't want to get into too many details, but the state released a sample ordinance showing what a zoning-compliant ordinance would look like, that complies with this law. It actually had a 10-unit capacity in there. As far as I know, we're going to pursue the affordability requirement for any new housing. I don't think we've gotten to that point of discussing whether it will be our eight limit, the 10 limit that the state suggests, or we would be able to apply it to three families, four families, seven-unit townhouses, anything like that. So I don't think that's been, I'm sorry if I just did something. I don't know if that's been decided yet.
No, I, that's helpful to know. You can guarantee I will ask about this the next time we talk. And the additional piece to that, that I would love for us to keep in mind, is not just requirements, but incentives based on certain types of, you know, income-restricted units, that perhaps you can, you can go from a three to a four family if that additional unit is restricted at 80% of average median income, or something like that. So that would go, so that would be above and beyond what were required by the state, but would meet some, would have the potential to meet some goals for affordability.
I guess, and I'll just end with this comment. I guess that's the question, you know, that we're dealing with. The state law doesn't require any affordable housing. It allows you to require 10%. So we'll do as much as we can within the state parameters. But we may not be able to do that incentive program, if that's considered, to get us, that moves us beyond those requirements. You know what I'm saying?
Right, but it wouldn't be.
The state isn't requiring it.
It would just be, I mean, it wouldn't be a requirement. It would just be additional, above and beyond what's already meeting the state threshold. Or that's what we had, that's what had, that was the option we had raised at the previous hearing. So that's why I'm going up on it.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Who would like to come up and answer Mr. Kinnon's questions? Did you want to answer his questions?
I wouldn't mind, really.
Okay, well, so you wanted to, you wanted to come up as.
I didn't write anything down, I didn't prepare anything.
Okay.
But alls I can say is.
First, would you please state your name?
My name is Len Marullo, 134 Dexter, Malden.
And would you please also sign in on the sheet?
All right. And, you know, there's been a lot of promises of infrastructure improvements and so forth. And there's one big issue in transportation. I believe the Orange Line could have more express trains. There's been a proposal to work on Route 1. We don't know what the state is doing about that. So, I mean, you're kind of just listening to what the state wants. And, you know, there's a lot of things that Malden could use, Rivera could use in terms of Route 1, even Route 99, and improvements. You can't just say, the other problem is the timeline of implementation. There's a timeline for this hypothetical plan to be submitted. But, you know, how, how are these things going to be done? You can't, you can't be building without planning first for the infrastructure and the transportation issues. That's all I have to say. And I, I just recall, you know, when the Big Didd was done as well, there was a Green Line component. And it took over 23 years for that to be implemented after the Big Didd was done. And that was part of the, so. This is a complex issue, and I, and even units. We don't even know, you know, the square feet of the units. There's a lot we don't know. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marullo. Like to approach the podium? State your name and address, if you would, please, once again.
Yep. Hi, Nelson Nelson, Stantec, 40 Water Street. I'm here to address the first comment from the public, from the gentleman, who, thank you for bringing the original research. I just wanted to clarify a couple of points of our plan that I think might help orient you compared to some of the things that you brought up about overall density. The first one was, we originally had shown a scenario that had more density in the CBD. But hearing from council, we tried to go around any key commercial, future commercial development sites, so that Malden could get that type of tax revenue in the future. So if you look at the yellow zone, it's kind of hollowed out, especially on Pleasant Street. So that was in reaction to trying to preserve that potential future commercial development. The other question was about the overall average density in Malden. And you're right, it is quite high. And one of the things that we're working to do is to try to capture that existing multifamily density where we can so that Malden can get credit for it in this MBTA community's requirement. So that's why we have some sub-areas outside of the core in altitude and in overlook ridge. And that also speaks to the reason why we have many sub-zones instead of one large central zone. It's because we wanted to be able to match the existing context where we could. Or. we could, or shape the expected change in, in other areas. So, hopefully that addresses some of your concerns.
Thank you.
Did you want to mention the minimum size? He asked about the-
Oh, the minimum size?
Size of the district.
Yeah, that, yeah, thank you, Michelle. The minimum size of the district is, is 50 acres, but if we just had the minimum size, that'd be a very high density. And so, by spreading it out, we'd get closer to the 15. Thank you.
Thirty-one is Malden's total.
Oh, 31, okay, sorry. Malden is 31.
Thirty-one acres is the total, and then 15, half of it can be outside the T, say, eight acres.
Can you, I don't know if I'm supposed to ask anything, but I need some clarification of that. What does that mean?
Ms. Ramiro, do you want to come up and?
Is it 50 acres total?
No, no. The state, the state law you referenced, or that was referenced, says a district of a reasonable size. And, you know, first when the law came out, we all said, what does that mean? What does that mean? The state issued guidelines. And there are specific guidelines you can find on the state website, pages and pages of them, and they went through each of the MBTA communities, and they identified, what is the reasonable size? What is the minimum land area the district has to be? For Malden, it's 31 acres. They also identified the minimum number of units, what is our capacity. That's where the 6,930 number comes from. We did not make those numbers up. We were told by the state, these are the numbers you need to comply with. So, our total district has to be 31 acres. Then the guidelines also provide other specifics. Half of that 31, so 15.5, has to be within a half mile of the MBTA Rapid Transit Station. The other half can be outside that half mile. That's why we're allowed to, and we're asking, you know, we're looking into, outside, Overlook Ridge, altitude, some of the other areas of the city that are outside. So, the state, the state has set those two numbers. They've told us what's a reasonable size, and the minimum capacity that has to be met with the new zoning.
Did you know the CBD acreage?
I don't know the CBD acreage, but I do know that during our, and I, I will get you the exact, but we've looked at at least 15 acres, which are all the largest parcels in CBD, and we would need to eliminate, so that's about 15 acres. We would need to eliminate essentially, I would say, most of the commercial. So, that's including 200 Exchange, and some of the other, you know, existing commercial properties up and down Pleasant Street. So, that 15 acres I just mentioned, we did, we did look at initially, but it would need to be very high density to come close to the numbers. And by high density, I mean like the RIO densities, which is 150 square feet per unit. So, that's more, a lot more than the 15, I have it here someplace, it's more than the 15 acres per unit.
Mr. Kinnon, did that answer your question?
It did, my question.
We can, we can work on that. I am going to take just a two-minute recess for a second, as you can see, there's some discussion going on up here. We're trying to just figure out a little technical difficulty, we're actually trying to stop sharing, I believe, your screen, Sarah.
The issue, the issue was that there's three attendees.
Okay, we have three attendees that are-
I think if the attendees have questions, if they could put it into the Q and A, that would be helpful.
Okay. Attendees, if you can hear me, if you have a question, if you could put it into the Q and A, we're just concerned, we don't want to leave you out, if you do want to participate in the public hearing.
When I was on earlier, they weren't even there. I could see them on my phone, but I can't, I have a reception machine.
Okay.
Is anyone that hand raised?
Does any, does anyone have their hand, can you see if anyone has their hand raised?
No one has their hand raised. There are three people, one of them is Craig.
Okay.
Oh, we have something in the Q and A.
I think it's Craig, he's just getting his comment. Yeah, you can see that, okay.
You can't, you can't see him, so you can't promote him.
We need to be able to see him, so that we can-
That's weird, because you could promote me to panel.
Well, this wasn't like this when we first turned on the media.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I need to be able to see him, so that I can promote him to panel.
You're a panelist.
How, I can't put on a name.
It wouldn't allow that.
I'm just trying.
I can't, because you're not a-
I'm, I'm a panelist, I'm just not a host. Could I be converted to host?
Maybe. Can you convert?
I'm a, I'm a panelist, but if I'm converted to host or co-host-
If you can make Nels a co-host, then we could unmute Craig.
Make host.
Yep.
Okay. Can, can, do you, do you want us to unmute Counselor Spatafora?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do you want us to unmute?
I can't, I don't, I can't hear what you're saying, Councilor.
So, do you want us to unmute Counselor Spatafora?
Yes, please.
Counselor Spatafora, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate it, thank you for letting me participate. I just wanted to make a statement, I think as mentioned earlier, that Councilor Winslow, myself are on the committee. I, it might have been said, but this is just the early stages for the, for everybody who's there in attendance, with a lot of great questions, and we will be doing the survey, and there's a lot more to come to this. But I think a couple things have come out of this discussion early on, which, which the council, at least myself, has been certainly trying to grasp with, with. The state has, you know, mandated this law to create more housing, but what Counselor McDonald so eloquently found out, and knows this now, is the state didn't mandate it to be affordable. So, what's happening now is, we could, we could add more housing that unfortunately may not be that affordable to most of the people who, who really need the housing. So, I find that a challenge. I know the residents of Malden certainly just do not want more high-end condominiums or apartments, because that's what we've been trying to avoid. So, while I do see some positives, I do understand some of the challenges with this rule. I think the other thing, which I think other councils, I know Council O'Malley has mentioned it before in the past, too, is it's by right. And not only is the pocket requirements, which certainly is a concern, but I also think just the, the, the efforts on standards, and certainly the architectural designs. I know that several councils are here, and, you know, Counselor O'Malley, for his credit, in certain developments, wants to make sure that they're aesthetically pleasing. We lose that ability. And the third thing I would say, just from my seat, too, is, and I'll, you know, Counselor Winslow is, is trying to develop some areas with a mixed use, to have the housing, and, you know, work, live, play, and, and to keep a certain component of our commercial space, because we know the commercial space not only isn't important to the residents, but more importantly, it is very, very important to the baseline, tax baseline for the city. And if we just take, get rid of all the commercial space and industrial space, and leave nothing but residential, that is going to be a problem for our, our future state. But again, by right, we don't have controls on maybe some of the actual textual design, site plan review, and/or even having the ability to say mixed use. It is, we can certainly try to emphasize that and reward them, but we've been told time and time again, that it's not something we can require. So, there are a lot of open-ended questions that still have to be resolved, but this is an early part of the discussion, and we look forward to continuing throughout the summer. Thank you, Councilor Murphy, let me, to allow me to speak.
Thank you, Council President, uh, Council, yeah, Counselor Spatafora.
You're the president.
I know, I know. I might hand it back to you. But anyway, yes, thank you. And you are actually still on as a panelist, because you actually are part of the, the sitting council this evening.
Thank you.
So, anyway, we do, I believe, have, I'm assuming that we have another gentleman in the audience that would like to speak, because I did see someone come up, yes? Ian, come on up, if you'd like to come up. Please state your name and address for the record. One, oh, one second, let me get your, Theo.
My name is Daniel Coff, I live at 53 Glen Street in Malden. Thank you, Council President and City Council. I just wanted to speak in favor of increased density in Malden, and the addition of more housing in the city. I understand that there are quite a lot of details to work out, including figuring out ways to ensure that new housing that's created is affordable for people who live in Malden. But as someone who lives a block away from the North Florence District, and within walking distance to Oak Grove, I would just, I would just like to say that I would support to have about 500 new neighbors in my vicinity. I think the addition of new housing in the area would create more opportunity for local businesses. And for example, last night, I called up Pearl Street Station after nine o'clock, and was able to order a pizza, and they did a great job, and it was wonderful to have a restaurant open that late for food. And I think having more density, more housing, would create just more vibrancy, more opportunity to support local businesses, and I'm in favor of the work that you're doing here, to try to comply with the state regulations to add more housing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else online have their hand raised? No, okay. So, Counselor Linehan, I did see your light on, and it was before Counselor O'Malley, it's off. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, all right. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. I think it's been a lot of great conversations, and, you know, I think to, to Mr. Kinnon's point, I think that, you know, any opportunity that we can use to kind of really bat at home to the state, that the current education formula is not working, I think is important. I don't think that means we shouldn't do this necessarily, but I do think we should send a strong message, particularly to the, the new Attorney General that has said that they, she would, you know, move action against communities that did not comply, to really, you know, lay out that the current formula doesn't work. You know, your, your revenue is driven by new growth, it's driven by your property taxes, it's not driven by the income of the residents that live in your community. And so, I do think that that is a fatal flaw that our legislature has really not taken action on. I do think the Student Opportunities Group, I mean, the Student Opportunities Act, while well-intentioned, and they have been able to kind of finagle some stuff with ARPA funds, and being able to kind of give us more money now, really does burden us in the long run, because we have to provide more resources locally that we just don't have. And so, while that was a, you know, a big accomplishment by Senator Lewis in the legislative, the legislative, legislative delegation, they do need, really need to take a look at the education formula. So, Counselor Kinnon, I know that you're well informed on that. I know that our Chief Strategy Officer, Ron Hogan, is very informed with that, but we all kind of need to figure out how to get the legislature, how to get our, our state reps and our state senators to take it seriously and get moving on this. But I don't think that means we should necessarily jeopardize this. I'm happy to hear that there is an affordability component to this. I think the last time we spoke, we were hearing the opposite answer, but maybe I'm miss, I'm not remembering that correctly. So, we can go up to 20% affordable as a, as a, as a requirement, as long as we do this study that you mentioned?
Yes.
And that would be considered by right? Like, even, having that type of attachment to it, it would still be by, it would still be considered by right, even though they have to provide affordable?
Do you want me to answer?
I don't know, I forgot the rules, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, no, 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 I, we kind of just, we kind of dispensed with the rules. I had set that up originally, because I didn't know if we were going to have 50 people in the audience and 100 people on Zoom. So, it seems we have, you know, limited questions from the public, so now we are on councilors' questions, so we will just go one and one. And if a public person comes into the meeting and has a question, we will answer that at the time they ask it, if we can.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, no, I think we've always known from the beginning that we can allow it, it's not required by the state, that we can. We've always known that. We've known we were going to need to do some sort of economic feasibility analysis to go above the 10%. Our current economic feasibility analysis that we did preceding the IZ was done for 15%. So, we could go, try to go for 20, but I think we may need a whole nother, not just the assessment that the state wants us to do, we might need a whole nother study to back that up if we went to go for the 20.
So, it might be safer to go for 15?
Right. The 15, we have the documentation to go for the 15, as far as I understand. We have to, you know, complete the models and the assessments and the, the exercises the state wants to do to show that, that we can, you know, it's feasible. But I think if, we could technically go for 20, but I think we'd have to do a whole nother feasibility study.
I think 15 is reasonable.
Which we weren't planning on, right?
I think 15 is reasonable. That, I think that definitely should be put into the plan. And I, and I have spoken with, with, with the planning staff, and with the, with the committee, they had a meeting this morning, that I was able to attend briefly. Yeah, I, to Counselor Spatafora's point, I was concerned about including crucial, prime redevelopment opportunities in the downtown that could be commercial properties, because again, this is by right. And so, that same feeling also kind of applies, I think, to like the Stop and Shop parcel. You know, I, I think that that's such a prime location for a, a mixed-use commercial property, that I, I do think that maybe the Stop and Shop parcel should not be included. I do think National Grid should be, because it's so heavily contaminated that in order for them to put any housing, they would have to really actually clean it up. So, let's incentivize that. Something else to think about, maybe we try to put these on our most contaminated parcels, and try to encourage, you know, people to actually clean it up. But, but if we were to take out large blocks in the downtown where the density can be, we need to spread that density somewhere else, and I, and I don't think that higher dense, I think that the goal would be to take that higher density and spread it to a lower density. And again, we have some really great examples in what's been proposed, like up on Summer Street, and we mentioned it at the meeting earlier today. You know, if we could do more of the low-density three and four families up our main thoroughfares, I know we're showing Summer Street, we're showing Main Street, we're showing Mountain Ave, but I know Salem Street, for instance, has a lot of apartment buildings along there that are a little bit higher density. If you allow, you know, a three or four-family build local wealth, or something that we, we kind of talked about, I think that's a way we can get to the number, and actually make this a, a win-win for our community. But it's kind of like threading the needle there. And I apologize, I just want to make sure I get through all of my comments. Sub-districts, sub-districts. So, there are also instances where a main thoroughfare would not, a density along that wouldn't make sense. Main Street's a perfect example. You know, I think that south of Florence Street is very different than north of Florence Street. Summer Street is, it's very different south of Mountain Ave than it is north of Mountain Ave. So, coming up with those sub-districts, and if we can even put in the, in the zoning, you know, you're allowed to do three and four families above Mount, above Mountain Ave on Summer Street, and you're allowed to go up to whatever number we put for a higher density south of Mountain Ave. I think that's ways that we can make this work. And then the minimum design standards, to what was being talked about earlier, if we have to allow it by right, then we need to have these minimum design standards, because we're not going to get an opportunity to do it piecemeal at the special permit. So, that's just something I really think that before we actually put this forward, we get that right. And if that means we do it late, and we get in trouble, to Counselor Kinnon's point, I'd rather have their attention on Malden, and we can be like, hey, fix the education formula while you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Winslow, who actually is sitting in Councilman O'Malley's seat.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I just had some questions on page five, the working draft, sub-districts and the numbers on that, so, yeah. So, I know down in the right corner, see, if you want to pull up page five there, it talks about net news- So, I know down in the right corner, see, if you want to pull up page five there. It talks about net new zone units could be between 250 and 1600. But I guess as I add the numbers in the individual things, it seems that right now we have existing units, 5,862, which means it looks like we'd need somewhere around 1,068. So, I'm, explain a little bit the, the range of 250 to 1600, so just to...
Yeah. Those are soft numbers. To give an idea of, of, this is an opportunity to either minimize the additional housing or, or add, add more housing where it's needed. I, I recognize that the numbers tonight represent a scenario that results in a zoned unit number that is much larger than 6,930. And so, that net new unit number is, is going to be larger than the 1600 number. We, we don't, that's, that's just sort of one range to, that we expect that it will fall in, recognizing that the scenario shown tonight still has a lot of flexibility with a lot more units than, than, than we actually expect Malden to, to, to zone for, to comply, because it is higher than the 6,930 zoned units number.
So, I'm just trying to understand of how, kind of moving forward, because I talk about trying to, what pathways we go down. So, I mean, it looks like, you know, these scenarios that were shown, it looks like, you know, that sets out somewhere a couple thousand potential new units. That's, and we could lower that. But then, I, I guess, you know, if we, if we go below kind of 1,068, which seems to be what we need to, you know, just the rough number of compliance. So, then would, would we have to sort of morph these, these zones to try to capture more of what's already existing? Is that sort of that 250, is we just have to do more contortions to try to achieve that?
Right. In other iterations where we were adding more to Malden Center A, more mixed-use properties, such as this building, we, that, that net new zoned was lower.
Okay.
And so, I guess that, that number is, again, a range. The net new zoned units could be 6,930.
So, but the risk is if we go below 1,000 new units proposed, we might be jeopardizing commercial, we might be, we might be losing something else, or, so that, that's what we just have to, as we get, you know, 2,000 is, is, you know, the, the higher range we're looking at. 1,000 is, is about what we would need, just based on this analysis. If we try to go below 1,000 net new units, then we're going to run into trouble. We might be putting commercial areas into by-right housing, which we might lose stuff, and we're not certain whether we can do multi. So, I'm just trying to understand what, what the options are and that, why that number is, is not, I was thinking it's just going to be dead on, but now I can understand.
It's, it's a few things. It's the, it's the mixed-use question. It's, you know, we've done dozens and dozens of iterations of this at this point, that where we landed today was just one snapshot of one way that it could go, but there are ways to add, you know, lower-density neighborhoods that we had in previously and things like that to, to get the net new lower.
So, okay. So, so it's, we just, as we, I mean, at least it seems like, based on what we see on, what I think, you know, the study committee that Craig and I were on, you know, I think we talked about that, this, this number of about 1,000 net new units is sort of what we think best achieves what the, the council guided us on of, like, don't over-buy right commercial areas and, you know, make sure we're, you know, you know, preserving our affordability and that type of thing. So, I think that's just something to understand. If we, if we try to press below 1,000, we can achieve that, but there might be some other adverse consequences of like reaching into lower-density areas or, or impacting commercial things. So, I think that's just one of the things to understand of, you know, it's a little push-me, pull-me thing that as we, if we try to contort and to try to get fewer new units that we can comply, there might be some other adverse consequences. So, that's, that's just a, so, you know, that, that's why we kind of, you know, settled in on this, which looks like, you know, it's about 1,000, you know, is about what we would need following these basic scenarios. And if we take something out or add something, we might have to balance it out in other ways. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow. Counselor Siminelli?
Thank you, Madam President. Obviously, we've got a little ways to go on this project, but, you know, I will say, you know, looking at this and, you know, going back some years from like 98 to 2008, when I was on the council at that time, the direction of the city was a little different and, you know, people didn't want to have any multi-unit buildings on, put on, you know, put on postage stamp-type sites and stuff like that. So, we had put the moratorium, the first, first moratorium through to stop that. And that was the direction of the city back then. And, but, you know, things have changed. So, here, here, it's like fast forward, and here I am up here. And, you know, we are facing a, a serious housing crisis. You know, we see it ourselves every day, whether it be on the news or whether it be when we step outside, especially in my neighborhood, you know, I see a lot of that. And what I like about this, this, this project is that I, I see finally spreading the wealth and, and spreading out affordability housing throughout the city like, like it should be. And, you know, if you take a ride through my neighborhood, you can see that, for whatever reason, urban renewal back in the 60s or just, I think that's just the way my neighborhood was built right from the beginning in the old Suffolk Square, and just the way it was built. But it's, you know, a lot of multi-dwelling houses, absentee landlords, housing developments. I live in one of them. I lived in the other one growing up as a kid. So, you know, when I was a city council, it was always like, I was always kind of pushing back when it came time for like doing, you know, apartments, whether they were affordable or whether they were market rent. Because sometimes you got to watch out that affordable thing, because we're, you know, in a consortium too. So, you know, sometimes you look at it as a city councilor and you say, well, you know, you're building affordable housing, I'll give you, I'll give you an example, it was housing families who came in, which I helped them come into Ward Seven and was happy to do so. But they wanted to put in 20 units too, at the, along with their, their office. And, and we did that. And I was always fighting for the, the Malden resident thing. Because as city councilors, you know, those are the calls that we're getting, is like, you know, hey, Chris, you know, my, you know, my daughter can't find a place to live and, you know, everything is so high-priced and, you know, she's got to go into a shelter because she can't afford it, or she's got to move all the way up to New Hampshire and her support network is down here. And we didn't have that ability to say that we wanted Malden residents first. You know, they kind of gave it to me a little bit, because, you know, I'm kind of a pain in the neck sometimes, and they just do it to shut me up. But back then, you know, I, I had no say over it. You had a consortium with, with Chelsea, with Revere, Everett, Medford. So, for instance, whoever's on the list ahead of that, ahead of that Malden person gets the unit. That's how it works. So, as a city councilor, it was like, I wasn't that advantageous to put more affordable housing in a very heavily thick affordable housing neighborhood already, because what was the, what was the return on that? I couldn't, if I wasn't allowed to get Malden, I served Malden residents as a city councilor in the city of Malden. Malden resident, that's my job. So, if I can't help them, then, you know, I, you know, why, why would I want to build that housing? The incentive is not really there as much. But I think things have changed a little bit, and I had been talking with the director for strategic planning and development. I actually finally said it right. And, you know, we've talked about doing something down in my neighborhood now on affordable home ownership, trying to do, which, you know, I was told that we can do like a Malden preference and a Malden resident thing. So, that's kind of, you know, sparked my interest now again to, you know, start opening up the door to do some more affordable housing stuff, because there is a crisis. And, you know, Counselor Kinnon makes some really good points here on, we got to watch ourselves to make sure we don't overstep on losing industrial and commercial properties. And the, and we know that the Chapter 70, we got to, we definitely got to take a look at that and, you know, get a little fire under our state legislation delegates to kind of go up there and fight for us a little bit more on that end. But overall, I mean, I do like what I see here. I think the things that I have mentioned can be worked out. Sounds like it can be worked out. So, it excites me to see that the way this is developed here, and I, and I do like, and I talked to Counsel O'Malley about this on several occasions, I do like the mixed use. I think it works, you know, retail in housing. I think that's the thing today, and it seems to be working. So, you know, I am excited. I know we got a long way to go with this, and, you know, I, I will be talking to the directors that I just mentioned and moving forward and my colleagues. But, I mean, so far, you know, I think this is a, a step in the right direction from the way I see it at this point. So, you know, I'm a little bit excited, and I know we got some way to go, but...
Thank you, Counselor Siminelli. Counselor Linehan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. This may be a question for Counselor Winslow, the committee and the StanTech consultants. I am wondering, you know, from the presentation that we had in April or May, before the committee, and then I know that we've had these series of meetings, one of which I was able to attend, most of which I couldn't because they're just in the middle of the workday. And I understand a ton of work went into refining what we talked about initially to how we got to today. I'm wondering if you can walk through very briefly how we came to the point of eliminating some of the stuff that we had talked about that I thought had a lot of momentum behind it, like the South Broadway proposal, or why we wouldn't be extending like further down Route 60 or further down Commercial Street. I, I love what's done here. I'm just wondering if you could walk through kind of what was cut between then and now?
Hi, Michelle Romero. I can at least start. And I've been working with the group since even before the councilors joined this working group. So, in April, when the ordinance committee looked at all seven scenarios, and they voted on exploring Scenario 1.
The broadest one.
Which had the most options.
Yep.
Then at the next meeting, the full council also voted on supporting exploring Scenario 1. There were a lot of comments made at both of those meetings. Scenario 1 didn't include the Broadway Plaza. So, right off the bat, the consultant started working with what the framework of Scenario 1 was. Certain comments were incorporated in, others weren't, and they can probably speak to how that went. I don't know that there was any, you know, intentional reason. For example, Counsel O'Malley, I think, had talked about extending up further up on Main Street. You had talked about extending on Summer Street.
Yep.
Then at one of the committee meetings, these internal meetings, Counsel Spatafor talked about expanding the Oak Grove District to include the western side of the station.
Yeah.
So, things have come and gone, and we can certainly give you more details on each of these as to how these were included, those weren't. Part of both votes, though, was the statement, so it was made into your vote.
Yep.
To not try to have the least impact on commercial. That's why we saw the carving out of that central business.
Yep.
Area. So, that part I definitely can say, but I do just want to add that this is definitely, we've said it a few times, this is a work in progress. And I do just want to, you know, take a bit of, I guess I'll say disagree with Counsel Winslow. The committee has not endorsed 1,000 units. That 250 to 1600, you can add up numbers, you have to move different combos, and you can get as, I think it was as low as 226 for net new. So, there's any possible combination, any of these cards can be changed.
Okay.
Malden Center B, the density can be increased, so that it's, and I think in Scenario 1 that you saw, it was more than 900.
Yeah.
On, so, it's, it's been moved around, and I'll go back now to the, oops, sorry, to the consultant to give you maybe, if you want more specifics, as to why that recommendation was followed, but that one.
Sure.
Wasn't. And I personally think, as I said at the beginning, it had to do, we were trying to at least adhere to what you officially voted on to explore.
That's very helpful.
But that certainly doesn't mean that we can't explore, and I think that's the purpose of having this meeting, to get more feedback, so we can see if we can come up with any more ideas.
That's really helpful. I appreciate it, Michelle.
Sure. I'll also point out that since our April meeting, the guidance from the office formerly known as DHCD, I haven't remembered their new name yet, the guidance has been coming out on a rolling basis, and, and we have since been able to talk with them a lot more and, and receive more guidance about the affordable housing situation and also the capacity for mixed use. And that also informed our removal of Broadway Plaza from, from the slate. We cannot, you know, it is, it is housing by right.
Yeah.
We cannot use this, our, our compliance with this law to support mixed-use development and, and ultimately that site, it has a, it has a, you know, really valuable to the community, commercial use right now, and, and opening it up to be converted to just housing didn't seem like the, the move.
Yeah.
Other things, I wanted to, I guess I can talk through the specifics of these. I also just wanted to get to a few, I guess, I guess I'll talk through these first. All right, we're back here. So, yeah, a few changes that Michelle has already mentioned. We, we extended the little tendrils out along Summer Street and Main Street. We added to Oak Grove, and, and we carved out the mixed-use and potential commercial properties in Malden Center A. Some of the estimates have changed as we've sort of tweaked some of the dimensional requirements. But, but again, it's all sort of one snapshot of where our discussions are today, so...
I appreciate it. And I actually really love the, the tendrils, as you described it, some of the stretching out in, you know, up, up Summer Street, and I appreciate how you were able to carve out a contiguous district here and leave that commercial district kind of intact in a way that we really did ask for. So, I see all that work, and I'm actually really appreciative of the expansion into the, the west side, which is sort of what I represent, but I think there is a lot of potential there. I guess some of my question was driven by wanting to understand if there were reasons beyond the commercial aspect that we would stop, you know, like from going further west on 60. It's, it stuck out to me because some of these parcels already do have commercial on them, and I think it, I see a lot of, I see a lot of districts here where unless some major physical changes happen, I don't think there is going to be much built, which I know that we don't want to overwhelm ourselves, but I also don't want us to build nothing by only zoning in areas where it's highly, highly unrealistic that there's going to be property turnover. So, in thinking that through, I started to look at this and feel like, well, maybe if we went a little bit further out on some of those districts, that maybe you're actually getting into parcels that have a more realistic chance of having anything get built on them. But appreciating that this is a work in progress, and all the explanation you just gave makes a lot of sense. Yeah.
I, I didn't want to talk a little bit about South Broadway, because that was causing...
Yeah. Well, actually, I'm going to take, I'm going to take my turn next, so, we have a number...
I just wanted specifically to...
I did ask if Counselor Winslow had an answer to that before.
Oh, okay.
Is it a point of information?
Yeah, well, I mean, this is to talk about, you know...
Counselor Winslow, hold on one second, please. Councilor Winslow, hold on one second, please. Let me just.
Okay, yeah, no, I don't have a five-page presentation.
And I'm all set after that.
It did, I think probably just about the first or second meeting, you know, I asked, you know, I, I think Councilor Siminelli and I had talked about in the April meeting of, you know, maybe having South Broadway on there, and I said, I think there was a little bit, it wasn't as clear guidance from the council in the April meeting that South Broadway should be there. I think it was just a conversation that Councilor Siminelli and I were supportive of, but it wasn't a definitive, that's what the council wanted it in or out. So, and then I think that, um, I mean, I think it was, I think the consulting team did go back, the whole question about multi-use and whether that was something that was allowable was certainly something that was a little bit unclear in April, and there was some more clarity of like, no, there's no flexibility. It's either housing or, I, I guess the subtlety was, um, you know, if we included South Broadway, we were going to go a route of having to, you know, just think about whether, like, saying, all right, it's, it could be housing by right, but if you want to go over a certain stories, you have to have the multi-use and whether that was going to be an effective incentive or not. So I, I think it was distracting. I think, I think, you know, ultimately, you know, we do, Councilor Siminelli and I do want to look at South Broadway and, and, and really look at, you know, um, you know, trying to rezone that, but I think that way we could use a special permit process, we wouldn't have that by right, and we could have more community input and, and shape that better. So I think it's, you know, I, I raised it, but I, I think there's, you know, it doesn't mean we can't do it another way, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Winslow. Councilor Linehan, are you?
I'm all set.
You're all set? Thank you very much. So we do have a couple more lights, but it's the second round, so I'm going to take my first round first. So anyway, I do have a, one of the things I think tonight is, is for us, you know, to get our thoughts out of what concerns us and, or what we find very acceptable or attractive. So I'm going to take us back to page three, um, in the current strategy, and the last bullet, evaluate impacts to revenue, traffic, schools, infrastructure, open space, and municipal services. And I'm not a risk taker, as my financial manager will tell you, um, so I, um, look, when we talked, we've talked a lot tonight about chapter 70, we talked a lot last night in the school committee budget meeting about chapter 70. I personally hold no hope that that chapter 70 funding formula will change. It's something that's been talked about for years now, um, and for it to change, it means that it would have an impact on a number of other communities whose delegations would be up there screaming that they were going to be getting less money because Malden is getting more. So I think that's something that we really do need to take into consideration. We talked to our school departments last night, although there are, there is some, and I actually did ask for the exact figures, there is some room in our schools. We are not, you know, busting out at the seams yet, but we are taking up more and more space for special, um, uh, issues, whether it's sensory rooms or, um, uh, things that students need in order for them to move forward and actually, you know, uh, not perform, but, um, get the education that they all deserve. So, um, although we have square footage, classrooms are sometimes disappearing, and they're being used for other purposes. So we, one of the things that we as a city don't want to be faced with is we don't want to be faced with having to build another school, because it's not the days of when Mayor Howard built the schools and we got 90% reimbursement. We're in the days of building a school where we'd like you to get 50% if even that. So that would be a huge burden on us. So I think as we look at this, we really need to look at that third bullet, bullet, and understand that the impacts, that anything that we do here will have on this city. And we're coming into a budget cycle. This budget cycle is going to be fine, but as we move out into the future years, we are going to be hard pressed financially to continue to support the city as a whole. So one of our goals is to make sure that we do protect our city and the city of Malden. We have lots of other goals, too. We want to make sure people have housing, they have affordable housing, too. But if you build a house, and I'm just going to go back to my budget, if I build a house that's outside of what my expenditures is, and I can't buy the food to put in the refrigerator, my family's going to starve. And I think we have to be very clear that we, as a community, look at what, what, what is this going to do to us? How are we going to make sure that we can afford it? The other thing that really I think is a major impact, just from a counselor's standpoint, and I think anyone in a, in a ward that has some density to it already, which I do, if you go up and down Salem Street right now, um, people have no place to park. Parking is an absolute huge issue in this city. Okay, maybe in some of the more outlined communities where people do have more driveways, et cetera, um, if they'd use them, um, you know, that's not as much of an issue, but this by right development with the amount of parking that's required per unit is, um, just something that to me is absolutely unacceptable. Um, it, it is going to create chaos on our streets, um, and, and God help us during snow. I don't even know where the cars would be. So to me, one of the things, as I'm looking at our consultants, that I really personally want you to, to look at is evaluating the impact to our community. It's not just coming up with what looks nice, and I don't want to say looks nice, but what fits, what the state wants us to do. It's what is going to work for Malden, and if we can provide, you know, some additional housing and maybe some affordable housing along with it, that's great, but we can't overburden ourselves. And, and I think we just be, need to be very cognizant of that fact. So that's, that is what I'd like to say this evening, and that's some of the things that I would like to see the team focus on so that we can actually, you know, understand what's going to happen, because if you have to put this in place by December and submit it to the state, trust me, you're not going to have an answer on chapter 70. That, so that question is, if, if that gets answered in five years, we'll be lucky, if it even gets answered then. So, anyway. And let me see, who is sitting in, Councilor O'Malley, you're sitting in your seat, so you're next, you're actually next in line. Make it a little, make it a little easier for me.
Are we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want to rebut. I just want to respond. Um, I, we are looking at chapter 70. We've been working with Ron Hogan at the city, um, and using his calculator, adapting it for, oh, uh, we're, we're looking at the chapter 70 effects of adding housing, um, in these parts of town. We're using a calculator provided by Ron Hogan at the city, who, who has been looking at this, um, to evaluate, um, what it'll do to the, um, minimum required, uh, contribution by the, by the, um, city, um, as well as, you know, what's, what's left from, from the property taxes that we're assuming, um, would be added, uh, with, with these properties. So, um, we are looking into it from that lens.
No, and, and I'm, and I'm sure you are. I'm sure you are, but I can tell you from the discussion we had yesterday that, you know, when we look just at a city without this, and we look at chapter 70 and what it's going to look like, you know, going forward, okay, and what the city is going to have to put into the schools, okay, in order to keep the funding at the level the state wants, it's going to decimate the city side of the services, fire, police, DPW, et cetera. So that's where my concern is. The schools are going to be fine, because the ci, the city is going to have to put the extra money in to the school department budget, but what it's going to do is it's going to leave an empty barrel for ci, for city services, which is going to impact our residents. So, you know, you're not going to solve this problem up here with me tonight. All I'm saying is to, to be wishful, thinking that, you know, chapter 70 formula is going to change, and that's going to be our saving grace. That, to me, is, it's just a wish, sweet, and it's not, you know, we're not going to see it in the near future if it ever happens.
Yeah, we're, we're using the current formula, um, and so we'll, based on the net new units that our scenario ends up with, we will report a number of, you know, right, how the municipal contribution changes and how, and what's left for municipal services that, you know, is, is.
Okay, thank you.
At, or below.
Yeah, that's, that, exactly. So Councilor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you. So to, to Councilor Siminelli's point, you know, if there's a way that maybe, and I, I'm, I'm, I think this is what your point was, and if it's not, please correct me. I wonder if there's a way, be a way that, we talked about these tendrils that are going up like Mount, Main Street, Mountain Ave, Summer Street. Maybe there's a way that can be extended to some degree on certain key parcels down Eastern Ave. I, I don't know, uh, because one of the things I was thinking is, you know, where at Eastern Ave and Ferry Street, you know, we have some like used car lots, we have some, you know, places that potentially could, could benefit from it. So, oh, there's even the, the Bread of Life Housing Facility. So, you know, I think there, there's, that's potentially an opportunity, the, the eastern part of Eastern Ave, maybe even towards the middle of the city, based on Councilor Siminelli's feedback. Parts of Ferry Street potentially, um, are very similar to Main Street, um, you know, so looking at maybe both sides of these thoroughfares, whether it's Ferry Street, you know, Eastern Ave, Main Street, Mountain Ave. But again, I do want to emphasize, I think that like, looking at things closer to the city, where, where it can handle more density versus like north of Mountain Ave or, or, you know, even north of Clifton Street, uh, on, on Summer Street, like the, the character of the neighborhoods changed significantly based on those crossroads, so we do need to kind of tailor the density to that. To Councilor Linehan's point, you know, going west on Pleasant Street, you know, there's the whole cohousing facility that's already there, you know, might as well incorporate that into, into this, so we get credit for, for that. What else am I looking at here? I was writing notes. Um, and I, I mean, there's the unfinished parcel, um, on Middlesex and Charles Street. They're, the, the Cantella.
Oh, Cantella, yeah.
Canela being, the, the, Canela, like, is, what is it? Cantella, Canela?
Cantella.
Can, Cantella, finance, like that area maybe could be incorporated. I know they plan on putting some units there. So I'm just trying to think, how can we both make it make sense from a density perspective, but also get credit for what we've built? But I think that we're well on our way. I think this is pretty good. To, and to, again, to Councilor Siminelli's point, you know, mixed use, I know we can't encourage it, but I think there's ways to kind of be creative, um, because what we do want is we want to increase daytime density. We have nighttime density in Malden. People come here and sleep. But in order for our businesses, uh, for our restaurants to, to, to really make it, we need to increase the daytime density, uh, which oddly enough, COVID has kind of helped with that, because you have more people working from home. So, you know, I think there's a, there's a sweet spot there, um, and I think Malden is very well positioned, um, by using something like this, um, to get where we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Counselor?
McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll echo my appreciation. I mean, the, the number of factors that this team is balancing or trying to balance is really, it's a lot. So I, I echo so much of what my colleagues have said about the impact on city services and about some of the possibilities. So let me add my comments there. You know, this feels like a puzzle piece in a puzzle where I'm not really sure what the ultimate picture looks like. There's clearly a lot of like very specialized parcel-by-parcel work in this, which I think is, it's great that we have that level of granularity and expertise, and I really don't want us to lose the opportunity that this such, such a big scale rethinking of our zoning really creates for the goals that we have as the city. And that's, I would love for us to have, more than I love, I think it is absolutely necessary for us as a city to have a sense of what do we want to happen? What do we want to happen, and how can we use and leverage the requirements of this process to get to where that is? We've talked about affordable housing. We're going to keep talking about, you know, like housing that people can afford, uh, and we also have, as we're talking about, a, a need to not only, you know, be careful about the kinds of development that we're incentivizing, but to build the tax base to help pay for these, uh, increased requirements that we know and expect are coming from the state. So I think it's valid to say, well, let's not include this parcel here or there, because actually, we might have a vision for that that is around multi-use development and that has got more commercial base to it, so it's actually a better investment in our tax base. But I think we need some way of talking about that and how these puzzle pieces could work together. It's not my expectation they all happen at the same time. It's not my expectation they're all a part of the same, you know, the same ordinance paper, but I think we need to start talking more about how, how this is one puzzle piece that needs to fit with housing affordability and building the tax base in a sustainable way, um, that, uh, will lead us where we need to get in the next few years. Because speaking as the chair of the Finance Committee, I just want to echo Counselor, uh, Council President Murphy's points that like, we have to have a revenue development strategy. We have to be thinking about these things, or we're heading towards some pretty cataclysmic budget realities in the next three to five years. So now is the time. So that's my, that's my, that's my soapbox speech. My construct, constructively, what I will say is I think the ideas of looking down Ferry Street and, and Eastern Avenue make a lot of sense to me. I'm certainly willing to go over the state minimum if this is helpful. You know, in the school capacity, I stepped up for just a second, so I don't know if Counselor Murphy had said this, but the school that had, our largest K8 school is right off of Eastern Avenue, it's Salem Wood School, and that's where I think we're likely to have, you know, flexibility when we're looking at school capacity. We just started talking about, um, bikeway, you know, redevelopment, uh, bike, I'm sorry, I can't remember the term that it was. Yeah, greenway, like bike-oriented development. Trail-oriented development. Thank you, Counselor Winslow. This is your paper. So I think that stretch out of Eastern Ave, we have parcels that are large enough that there could be some flexibility, so we could actually, you know, deal with parking and, uh, green space issues. The thing that I want to say that makes that possible is to think about transit as including bus lines as well and looking at the revamped MBTA bus map. You know, we're looking at 15-minute or better routes on Salem Street through the combination of the 106 and 108 buses, um, east of downtown, the 96 taking, um, uh, Salem Street West as we, as we, as you're asking about, Counselor Linehan, and then down Ferry Street as well is a 15-minute or better bus line to Counselor O'Malley's point. So I think if we think about transit as including those high-frequency bus routes, it could take us a little further down these tendrils down Ferry Street, Salem Street, Exchange Street, uh, excuse me, not Exchange Street, Eastern Ave, um, and be able to get us more towards where I think we're articulating we want to go, and I'll just restate again, I think we, the city, need to do, uh, a better job of, of saying what that is, saying where we want and need to go, and figuring out how these puzzle pieces fit together. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, um, no, to kind of follow up a little bit, um, Counselor McDonald, I mean, one of the things I've been reading and, uh, as, as we're thinking about this going forward was that, um, you know, I think there was an aspiration sort of before COVID that Malden was going to, you know, we're going to really, you know, de-emphasize housing, build commercial. A lot of our planning, like down Commercial Street, was to really look at commercial corridors and, and, and we had seemed to be turning the corner where, you know, we had the Dartmouth Street development permitted and, and another one on Pleasant Street, and, um, I think one of the realities I'm reading about sort of post-COVID is that, um, cities are filling back, but it's the neighborhoods that are filling back more. A lot of people, you know, dispersed out of the cities and, and they're coming back to live, but they're not necessarily coming back into the office building. So I think that's a different dynamic, and so I think that's something that we as a city have to look at going forward in terms of, you know, it's this balance of, you know, if you're working from home, you want your, the area around your home to be interesting. So I think that's the kind of why it's so important to focus on the multi-use, because that seems to be what's being, being, coming back the most quickly in terms of urban living. So I think that's the type of thing, so we have to be sensitive of that, and, um, you know, you know, and that, and that might just be the work world going forward, that we're in a world where, um, work, uh, you know, you, you're looking at, even though maybe commercial realty is 20% bank it, um, in terms of what's available to lease right now, um, the buildings that are leased, 50%, of that space is not being used. So it just means that there's an overhanging thing that commercial real estate may not be the, as valuable, and the way we were thinking 10 years ago is we, we have to change to create, you know, to the new work, work-home, you know, balance. So I think that's something we have to think about going forward, and unfortunately, I think this is pushing a city like Malden too far towards housing. I, I think it's, I really wish there was more flexibility on the multi-use. I think it would be, uh, the type of thing that would really put us a step forward. So I think we, we do have to be, um, you know, make sure there's some bold, bold steps here, but I think we also, I think going forward in our planning, we have to, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have to think about, you know, how, how we make that, the work-home balance work for our advantage going forward. Thanks.
We have one more light on. Counselor Siminelli? Councilor Seminelli? Let me, Councilor Seminelli, one second. Just last turn.
I'm a mayor. I'm a mayor tonight. I'm in a mayor's seat.
I know. I just, that's right. It's been fun trying to figure out who's sitting in whose seat up here, so.
You know, talking about doing this expansion thing here, I think, you know, it kind of gives me some leverage. You talk about, like, Ferry Street, Judson Square. I know that, again, strategic planning and development, we talked about that when I was in office before with Director Burke, about doing Judson Square over. We never really got a chance to do it, but we, you know, I think we even got as far as some schematics, and doing some, like, roundstones, and on the lower level for retail space, and, you know, housing above, on both sides of Judson Square, coming down there. And, you know, it would just be a perfect site down there if you, you know, you go down there, and, you know, you're coming into a little square area, and you had some period lighting, some new trees, and, you know, could decorate that really well. There used to be the Pasta Market Cafe that was there, and, you know, really kind of brighten up that area. And I think, you know, it also belongs in a community development, CDPG area as well. So, we could probably really take a good look over there now, with this plan moving forward. And I know that, you know, doing a mixed use over there, or doing housing there, is going to give you a lot more return than what we're getting right now over there, because, you know, those buildings, I don't even, a lot of them don't even make code, you know? So, they're in desperate need of repair. It's very blighted. So, if we've got an opportunity, if I got an opportunity as a city councilor to develop Ferry Street, particularly Judson Square, and also going down Eastern Ave, Route 60, with the automotive car lots, and we can create something, which we already have, the .180, which looks marvelous over there, and some other areas. And, you know, every morning, I hang out at Honeydew Donuts at 5:30 with some retired friends of mine, and we solve all the world's problems by 6:00. And, you know, we often look outside there, and, you know, we've got the public storage facility, and then from there on down, all the way to the police station, if you look at that building, and if we can get a hold of that building and make it advantageous for them to develop that, I mean, you're talking about, like, some beautiful lofts going up. I don't know, I just think it would be a beautiful gateway, coming down Route 60, you know, and if you could have some mixed use, a few buildings on each side. I don't know, Medfitt's doing it, Somerville, you know, is doing it down there, so, you know, why not Route 60? You know, I mean, what do we got? Look what we're getting now. We're getting nothing but storage containment buildings there. And they're long-term, folks. They don't go anywhere. It's hard to get rid of them once they're there. So, anyway, you know, I don't want So, you did. No, listen, it's been, I know, that's all right. I got the message, Council President. But no, but I do. I like this overall plan. I think this is good dialogue that we're doing here. I think that we want to all see Malden develop, and, you know, we've got to be very careful also, that we don't bankrupt ourselves in the process of doing so. And I think we've got enough intelligent minds here and here to not let that happen, and make something spectacular come out of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Seminelli. Councilor O'Malley is just going to check the other computer to make sure that there's no one with a hand up out there. And, all right, well, we're just going to double-check. While he's doing that, okay, we're good. Before we close the meeting, the one thing that I do want to just say to the team is, obviously, this is something very new. Hopefully, tonight's meeting will get this information more out to the general public, and they'll have more of an idea of what we're talking about, et cetera. But I do think we need, and I'm sure the team has already thought of this, we just didn't come up tonight, but we do need to think of how we're going to do outreach to really alert the community that this process is underway. And I think some things, just even definitions, I like, what does "buy right" mean? I think if we can basically have some, you know, introductory, you know, definitions as to, you know, what some of these words actually mean to the general public, that would be very helpful. So, I guess I would just, as a takeaway, ask that in, you know, maybe your next few meetings, you start to, you know, talk about the outreach part of this, so that we can actually get people to participate in a survey that will be on, that will be online. So, thank you. With that,
I'm sorry.
How short are you going to be?
She'll shut you off. She'll just shut you off.
Can I turn you off, too?
Yeah, absolutely. So, just based on what we've kind of heard tonight, the feedback, I would like to make a motion, nothing crazy, but that the, I think it's like the sense of the council that
Yeah, it's a public hearing. It's not, we're not. It's just a public hearing.
It's not a meeting?
Well, it is. It's a council meeting, but it's just a public hearing. We don't have anything else, really.
I understand. I was going to move that we just kind of, as the sense of the council, based on like what we've heard at the hearing tonight, both from the public as well as our fellow colleagues, that we explore more of the tendrils. I liked that tendrils idea. You know, we just heard, you know, Councilor Seminelli talk about Eastern Ave, Councilor McDonald talked about Ferry Street, I mentioned Ferry Street. So, I would just make a motion that we look at more of the, both sides of those thoroughfares, corridors. But again, focusing on the affordability, the 15% affordability, I think that that's a decision we could probably make, that we want to go that route, and that take into consideration density of the surrounding neighborhood. That would just be my, my motion would be that that's my, yeah.
What I honestly would prefer, and I, you know, obviously, I'm not sure we actually can put a motion on the table, but we can stop and have a conversation about that. But I think tonight's meeting was an informational meeting to give, basically, the team some insight into how people are feeling. And I wouldn't want to just, you know, really kind of, I'd like them to go back and just absorb what they heard tonight, and have them take some time to process it, and then come back to us with, you know, suggestions. We're going to have many more meetings on this. Ms. Burke, would you like to just give me your opinion on whether you would like a motion on this, or would you like time to process this? On Ms. Romero, which
I'd say no motion, only because, like, you don't really have to
Right.
I think we definitely are, like, everything's
Okay.
I think it's like, I can talk about those in their meetings. Those also, public meetings, they're actively
Okay. As Ms. Burke was saying, you know, the meetings happen every other week. They are public meetings, they are advertised, so the general public is, you know, can go to those meetings. So, if you, and we do not have really a paper in front of us to vote on.
And I think certainly, as a representative of the council on that, I can kind of take that back.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I would be comfortable, like, retracting it, but I think that the reason why I mention it is that, you know, there was multiple mentions about, like, voting on Scenario 1, and, you know, that we did take various votes to kind of provide direction. So, I didn't, I didn't want it to be
Docketed, excuse me. Where I docketed, for you to have on your agenda, that you were going to
So, but again, I understand that this is before us, and like, we're at a meeting that has a hearing, so it's not a violation of the open meeting law by any means. It's very relevant to the discussion that we had here tonight. So, it would be helpful to, I think, to provide that direction. It seems that that's what's important. But I'll retract the motion, but, you know, I think that we should be prepared, the next time we do a hearing, you know, the planning board, you have hearings, and then you make motions based on the hearing. But, yeah, I don't want you to think it's just, because there was even a statement tonight made, you know, some councilor said this, some councilor said that. We incorporated some things, we didn't incorporate other things. So, the reason why I was saying it was, this is kind of like what the council feels, so they would have clear direction, and, but I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I, you know, like I was saying, I think that a lot of good things were talked about here tonight. I, you know, I think there's a lot of work to be done, and calculations to be done, but I think we made some good progress here tonight. And I think that if we, if we take a vote tonight on any type of motion at all, and I know, you know, we get excited because this thing's moving forward, but I think if we take any vote tonight, it would just, you know, look like we're trying to, you know, maybe rush things through, and I know that's not what you're trying to do, and that's certainly not what any of us are trying to do. But, you know, we've got, we've got some good things in front of us that we can take advantage of, to, you know, fix up some neighborhoods and help a lot of people. And I think this is, I don't see anything wrong with this, as we're rolling this out forward. So, I just think that, right now, let's, you know, take it easy, take it slow, and, you know, let them come back to us with some of the information that we requested. And then we can start seeing what we like, and what we can do, and what we can't do, and then we start moving forward and talking to our colleagues, and then trying, and moving some motions forward.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley.
I mean, I also point out, we did actually vote on a resolution the other night about, you know, a Route 60 corridor focus. And I was, because right now, we don't have a senior planner, it was sort of like, let's kind of take one thing at a time kind of thing. So, I think it is, you know, we, I mean, I think the intent is try to follow up on that idea. But, you know, we don't have to do everything in the city all at once. That's kind of what I took away as a conversation, so. But I think it is something that Councilor Seminelli and I do want to work on, and even the mayor mentioned wanting to work on it. So, I think it's just, you know, the timing right now, this is something we've got to focus on. So, I think, I think in particular, for me, the thought of, you know, the zones closest to the Orange Line stations is really what the intent of this is, and then we need to figure out ways to do, you know, take advantage of our other transit opportunities. But I think this is a start. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that being said, and seeing no lights here, just one more time, is there anyone wishing to speak on this topic in the room? Or on Zoom?
Ready? Can I speak?
Oh, yes, Mr. Kennan.
Can you come to the phone?
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you once again for this opportunity. I was a little concerned, sitting back there, with the words that just came out about, oh, should we take a motion? Should we do this? I think I heard that we're going to do a survey. And so, any motions before a survey would say to the public, as a former councilor, that it's already in the bag. And I know that's not the case. I know that's not the case, because there's no reason to do a survey if you're going to vote on these things without getting, I heard Councilor McDonald say, oh, what I think, and what we think, and what we, it's not we. It's your constituents, and you haven't gotten their opinions yet. I'm pretty sure, if you put it on the ballot, which you won't do, because you know how that's going to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kennan. Councilor O'Malley?
And again, it was a resolution to provide direction, not to pick a final plan. And the only reason why I had stated it was, I was trying to summarize the feedback that we heard tonight in whole, because it seemed to be something that was important to the planning staff. Again, there have been at least two votes already taken by the city council to provide direction before this meeting, which is how we got to revise Scenario 1. That's all I was looking to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor O'Malley. Okay, so, once again, would anyone like to speak? Okay. Council Seminelli, really? Really?
I'm just ready to wrap this up, Madam President. You know, that's all.
All right, so, so that's why I'm trying, that is what I'm trying to get to. I am trying to get to the point. So, is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none and hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed.